Councillors, council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the lands where we work, and that council celebrates the best and average of people and their ongoing cultures and connections to the people. Ed Waters will introduce our Welsh Central Table Land. Point of leaving, Mr. Wilson.
Members in the public advice of proceeding to this meeting other than in confidential matters is being recorded and made publicly available on council website. Persons attending attending the meetings should refrain from making any decisions.
Thank you. Is there any apologies? All four. Move the second, sorry. Councillor McKibben, Councillor Cable, all four. Against Kerry. Confirmation of minutes of joining meeting held on the ninth of October twenty twenty, can I have a move the second up? Councillor Reynolds, Councillor Ring, all four. Against Kerry, thank you. And we've got any disclosures of interest, Mr. Jim?
None.
I've removed the second at councillors, Councillor McKibben, Councillor Cable, all four. Against Kerry, thank you. Councillors now go on to the election of the chairperson and deputy chairperson. So I just need to, can I have a show of hands or someone to nominate how you wish to do it? If you want to have a show of hands or a show of hands, the second if you have. Councillor Leslie, all four. Against Kerry. I'll locate the chair. Thank you.
I'll call for nominations for the position of chairperson first. So I have a nomination here signed by Member Leslie and Member North with that nomination. Any other nominations? No other nomination for the position of chairman. In that case, being only one nomination, I'll declare in. The new, I'm sorry, the returning chairman. Can I form the nominations for the position of deputy chairman? Don't have any here at the moment. Any nominations for deputy chairman?
We've got four counties we need to do.
I'm used to nominating myself.
You could be one of them.
Well, I've never taken that. I don't believe in a program. Or second yourself, actually.
That's why you can vote yourself in elections, so you can vote yourself. You're going to cry for my counsel and you don't know what I want.
No, it's. It's not obvious. If you're standing in person, how can you make an objective assessment?
Oh, no, you think she said, I'm going to, you know, I might be, I'll give myself second.
Don't worry about that. This is going to cost you.
You can't say that.
So I have a nomination for the position of deputy chairperson, Andrew McKibben. Moved by Don Caper and seconded by member Bruce Reynolds. No other nominations for deputy. In that case, I declare the deputy chairperson for the next twelve months to be Member Andrew McKibben.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councillors. Item two, statement of investment as of October thirty first, twenty twenty, that I could move for a second up. Councillor Ring. Councillor Frye. Any commentary, councillors, members?
One question.
Member Reynolds?
I'll be moving to check account.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I haven't overlooked that request that I deliberately didn't include it and I would explain now. And that is that this particular report is prescribed under the regulations as being a certain thing. And it is only to do with investment reports, sorry, investment funds. And the problem with putting in here what might be in the sort of the day to day check account is that it changes every five minutes. And like, for instance, today, we have to pay bill, we have hundred twenty five thousand dollars. So it's up and down all over the place. And it's actually in the QBRs where all that information is provided. So I'd prefer to leave this report pure if possible. Otherwise, I can just provide information in total.
Member Reynolds, are you happy to tell? Is there another way around? Members, any other questions? Okay, we have a recommendation there, all four. Against Kerry, thank you very much. Item three, quarterly budget review statement. Number one, twenty twenty to twenty one, on answer you. There are recommendations, you cannot move them a second up. Councillor Leslie, Councillor McKibben, any questions, members? Okay, recommendation there, all four. Against Kerry. Item four, outstanding administrative matters. I'll get a move in a second. Councillor Ring. Councillor Reynolds, would you want to?
Quickly explain.
Explain, please.
So it's just three outstanding items there that I thought the council should deal with. One of them was that, that some time ago, the detail in the report, Blaney Council reminded this council that they had given at least an informal type commitment that they were going to do a new review of the governance arrangements for the county councils. And the council considered it on that request and said that they wouldn't do it. But they looked at the issue again late this year, which is now. And that's what the report is based on, suggesting that it isn't appropriate or necessary at this time. But that's a matter for the council to decide.
Was there, members, any questions with that commentary?
I'd be love, particularly for the next workshop, even though I see that it's slated for real next year. So I'll discuss that at the moment. But whether we could actually explore opportunities for the organisation because of the next workshop. So it discusses potential opportunities, expansion or doing work further. Local government areas, so to protect the economies of scale, that's the one concern. I always have this organisation is we don't have the economies of scale for a part time general network. We do, but we could have better economies of scale. So I'd just like to look at the next workshop, if it's potentially around Pedro March or April, to explore opportunities and then go away and see if there are opportunities.
When is that next? When do we have a next week, please?
So we haven't, Mr. Chairman, we haven't sent one just yet. I've got a draft schedule, but that's flexible.
So we will look.
Yes. That's a nice project. When we have it, it's nice, I'll be there in the hour of the next week.
Yes, okay. Member McKibben?
Just on that issue, General Manager, have we had any more approaches now or less, anyone else about running? There we control piss control.
So I think at this stage, the only inquiries that we've had, and I think you know of these already, one was the LLS. They have actually allocated us a small amount of funds to, let's just say, put the concept together of how we would manage public land. Inspections was two parts, but one is how should the local control authorities do it regardless of who's doing it? So they, so we will basically document our models and say, this is what they should do if they actually want the public agencies to respond. And the second part of that, that they're sort of waiting for that is to then, LLS were going to go to the other councils in central table lands, of which they're all actually the councils of local control authorities. And I suppose, as you say, sent out whether or not they were interested in us doing it for them. Because once they heard the process, they realised how complicated it is. So that's where that is, a little bit of time has to go forward. And then the other one was almost the reverse, where forestry in particular had been, let's just say advocating behind the scenes, I'm not sure what that exactly means, saying, can't we just, all those public agencies just have one authority telling them what to do? And I think we all know from experience that, you know, the railway authorities, in whatever form they are, basically ignore the local control authorities and we've just managed to get a leg up on that. So the same with forestry, they really don't respond to other agencies because the way they try to get them to do things is just totally incomplete or inappropriate. So nothing new up from those two.
You're on point. So now that we're sort of getting some information from people like Chair of the Weed Council, they've been apologised that you couldn't be here at the meeting of the council. Get some funding, I asked him if he could get some funding for us at the same time. But we're getting more information, surely we can sort of start using some of that to assist us to expand our base. And I agree with Bruce, we can obviously, sorry, Member Reynolds. If we can extend it, then it obviously dissipates our overheads over a greater rate of work, which is so everyone's there.
Mr. Chairman, I'll restrict my comment very briefly at this point because it is something, yeah, we could expand on it. A quick assessment of things in looking at these sort of options is that makes sense in terms of economies of scale to effectively have a central table lands, local weeds authority somehow. But how you do it, well, that obviously will advise us on course.
Can we follow it? Member Reynolds?
Chair, I just got to say that I've been approached by a major land authority, our, our Blaney LGA, who's having a couple of challenges with forestry next door to our LGA in Cabon. And so they're after assistance to try and help. So there are potential opportunities, that's not Cabon, that's approach, that Cabon is the, the development there. So as in, there is interest in what we're doing and people are actually paying attention and are aware of MOUs and other negotiations, particularly with the WALE authority. So hopefully that there may be opportunities to work closer or actually share our sources, maybe we stick some iteration for that.
In relation to that, remember Reynolds and McKibben, you're right, that the confidence people have in this organisation is a lot better in a situation that we can go forward and actually show that we can do the job. So it might be, you build it, they come to you, is we build it and we go to them and offer our services. So, yeah, there's definitely opportunities out there, which we certainly give, not LSOs in the position of, so you know, hundred percent. Member McKibben, is there something else?
No, I suppose the only, the only thing that. We can't do this, I don't know how we can work with all some of that. Obviously, and I'm sure Member Frye will be, I'm sure, whereas, once you spray areas, and I have to say, a year like this, for instance, Australia, tussing, you're less likely to cause major problem of major issues with grasses and more in dry years from experience. But if you leave areas considerably bare of vegetation, they need to be replanted. And I don't know how we go to the next step with landhogs, man, they do, as to whether we can push them towards areas that are inaccessible, certainly the direct drilling areas that are marginal, but areas inaccessible with ever receiving or doing something to try and get some vegetation back on that ground. Because as we all know, if you don't have vegetation there, even with food provenate, the weeds are going to come back. The best thing is to have a, you know, a thriving pasture. Or a root. Exactly. So I don't, I don't know if that's the next step, next area we might consider looking at, maybe too early to do it. But it is an area that's important. I mean, I've seen areas completely sprayed out of tussing and especially in dry years, and it does affect significantly as some of the children, as you said, that the price of where the native grass has something to improve. So there needs to be something to get back into the soil, to hold them, to obviously compete against any tussing that might come in after provenagers are worn off. We always used to find in bad areas, Australian Valeris is very good. It's not the most powerful stuff for the fattening lands, but it certainly is, you know, strong and hardy and keeps the tussing out in those areas. Councillor McKibben probably know, but you know, when, in those rocky areas that are not, you know, that are not particularly arable. But I just wonder if that's the next step we make, go to advising landhogs, I don't know, maybe that's too far down the track. But it would work in tandem with what we do, if we could get LLS on board or sort of refer them to someone in LLS to talk to. Just a suggestion.
Members, I'll just ask the General Manager to make a comment, something that Member Frye discussed with us at the meeting and as individuals about other ways to manage weeds, there was a discussion held, I don't know if this week, last week? Last week, I'll just get the General Manager to give a bit of rundown, sort of lead to see what's to talk about. And I'll inform the government next week.
So to start thinking down on the very heart of what we're talking about, and here's the issue that Member Frye raised on a number of occasions. We actually had a one day training session, like in the office and out on the field training, for a day last week on regenerative agriculture and the techniques and just the concepts and how it all works. A few of our staff were very interested in the whole issue, partly for their own personal, but also professional understanding. That's something that keeps coming up in the small organisation, that it's all very well for us to go and tell them they've got weed problems and by implication, tell them to go and spray because it's the most obvious out there approach. But once you do that, and we've highlighted a couple of examples here before, at that very point, we've gone out and done a great aerial spray and everything's died. And then we're in all sorts of trouble as to what might or might not happen. The, which way, I've been led to believe right from the start that LLS had the, you know, let's call it the sustainability responsibility in their bag of trips and that's what they were funded for, it goes back to the land care and the whole extension thing. But they either are not adequately resourced or, or, I'll say all competent, but I'm not saying they're not competent. I mean, I just don't know what they know. But they're very reluctant to actually get involved when we have real situations and we want to, our officers have done this, that and the other. We try to get in touch with LLS to say, can you now talk to those landhogs or give them advice on, you know, appropriate ways to reestablish pastures, et cetera? And I'm not saying nothing happens, it's a very, very tough path. It may be something we need to move into, but.
The LLS can be one day workshop. Here's a question, who is busy or they don't care. Oh, the one day workshop was for.
Was for.
Starters, but potential, once we report next one call. And we, Member McKibben, is once we do that, that I'll be looking for aggression later, where we take this to the next step. Member McKibben?
Can I ask the General Manager who he's contacted in the LLS, Barry Edwards?
That's hidden in the knowledge. Barry Edwards is the person that we've been told is the person to contact about that type of stuff.
I talked to her some time ago, she was quite interested, if you'd like me to contact her, but otherwise.
We're getting mixed messages about not, maybe not too much of their time.
Then they, then they're going to address one of these meetings.
The other one who used to be good rounding was Belinda Pachy, but she's moved on, but she's still a viable book. She's still with LLS, back to LLS, I think she's in the LLS. Sorry, hold on a minute.
Mr. Chairman, Phil Cranny, local land services, been conducting primary action workshops in the urban area, so long as I can remember. And I mean, it's my role, it's his role, it is an administrative individual landlord, he's going to hold workshops with landlords. And there's been, there's sort of a fall coming up in the area and it's not rocket science. This is Phil Cranny's responsibility. What we need to do is association with the council. We speak with Phil Cranny and discuss the issue really because if it's what we need is the, the people that you're talking about, Councillor McKibben, that Valeris overtaking the surrounding tussing, it's well known, that's. Like, this is Phil Cranny's life on, he's been a very experienced master person and he's conducted workshops all the time, it's the first. And it's not our role, but it's his role, he needs to coordinate any activity with the council.
And McKibben, you're right, is what we're trying to do, we're now at a stage now, that, you know, people are confident with the advice we're giving and we have these contacts and we can encourage, so we can give models of weed control and that. And as I said, a forward report initially come at the seventh meeting and I'm hoping for that discussions will lead us into these connections that might be had. Member McKibben?
Look, I endorse Member McKibben's position, I know, you both know, Phil. I would suggest that when we have people do the aerial programme in particular, but also extensive groundwork, we should encourage them to go to one of the workshops or we do a joint workshop with Phil Cranny somewhere and for revegetating areas that you spray or something like that. But there are also, you know, techniques for it, some areas you can do as the direct drill. I remember initially, we use some aerial and in a year like this, you've got great success with an aerial scene. The dry year is obviously different. So on really rough, rough country like, check by security, I would say, now the stuff I've got opposite the dog rock slot. All right, you know, we've had great success with aerial programme, did it in a year like this. But I think, you know, a joint workshop would be, might be, like, I fully endorse what Member McKibben says, not paying his grain on it, so.
There'll be a number of recommendations that come in that report in December, which we can figure out. Member Reynolds?
Just informing the council, there will be a pasture walk at Hartley. Looking at current pasture plants, putting weeds on the twenty eighth of November. At the AM, we'll go to the Central Table Lands LLS website, it was actually how I called it, but more married.
We're going to be.
Yes, please. Mr. Chairman, sorry, I forgot to mention before that we were going to do a report back to council in December on the whole issue. But I suppose the situation is that our, our offices are on the ground talking to individuals and it's the individuals who are telling us that the names of people we gave, not people, people, their names, but the names of people we gave, well, if they answer the phone, and it's probably along the lines of, they don't deal with individuals, they're more into different groups.
I'm going to have to call with a maternity call.
Yes.
If I don't get home clear on the phone or Phil Cranny, I email. And you have to be, I mean, sometimes you have to do more than one telephone call, not like, but, you know, it's like, the system's failed off.
Always saying, sip a feedback, we're out, you're out in the paddock.
And recently, the LLS was doing free soil tests for people. So it would have been ideal, having sprayed, soil test, see what nutrients you needed, then pasture, we worked really well. But again, maybe we can do this with them, but put soil tests in the, in your mix as well. I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we have to remember that the LLS agronomists have their responsibilities, we have our responsibilities. We can work together, I'm sure we can, it would be beneficial to us, to them, to, to, uh, please, uh, for us to work together. But I think we have to be careful to let them know that we're not trying to take over their responsibilities. Others, I've, you know, the big ones, and David since we've been, I learned to it. And I've not had any trouble contacting them and finding that they're, you know, would get on with. But we need to probably remember that their family and our family's spread on their, they're not a big area. And, yeah, I think, I think that what we have to be, I mean, that is to have a more relationship with them so that we can.
Is there a comment, members, would need to be delegate to the local government, so I was in the conference for twenty?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I think that's probably pretty self explanatory, really just for you to note the fact that we didn't either, didn't have anybody participating or didn't have anybody who was available to be our representative. So I've made a couple of inquiries and other advice, if you have anything else, I was calling that, just for information.
Okay, I would say, Chairman's any function, Mr. General Manager, could you give a rundown of this?
Your report, deciding, we did the last council meeting and we went around the table. Really just putting it back here to have a decision. But since that time, and I have alluded to it here, the reality is that very few within the staff really want to work in. And that is all to do with, whether it's overreaction or not, is not the point, but it's all about trying to remain and their families as safe as possible. As mentioned for Chairman before, to date, we've been very lucky, nobody's had any problem anywhere in their family, extended or otherwise, and don't want it to change. So you just need to be aware of that fact.
Member McKibben?
Oh, look, I appreciate the position taken quite fast, but the incident, incidents in Australia is very high. And this area was, well, I don't know, in the last case, wasn't this area.
Surich trip.
Which Surich trip was that? Did it, when? Oh, that's one thousand, because that's a bit, yeah.
There's a whole lot more to story than, I'm not going to, but that's negative in the whole end of it.
Sorry?
It was negative in the end, they mixed samples and did all sorts of things.
Okay.
That was wonderful, one guy.
I understand the position taken, but I would have thought with the incidents and the relatively low incidents and Australia is opening borders and everything else, but the internal, I'm talking about, um. I think it's a pity not to have a function, but I, I don't think it's worth having a function as a staff not going to tend by and large. Because part of, as I think a lot of us know, Member Leslie, as I said last time, you know, part of things actually, being with the staff, thanking them for their efforts, showing that we're supporting them, they're right behind them in their efforts and we really appreciate what they're doing. And we can do that in this vein to two people, three people. But I think it's, it's really, you know, I, I think it's good for morale and for a lot of other things. But I, I understand that if the staff themselves are unwilling to take to this, then probably it's not worth going to function. But I think it's getting. I think, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I agree with Member McKibben, I think it's a pity, but that's, that's the way it is. Perhaps we can delay doing something until the middle of next year or something like that. I think, I think it's a good idea to show our appreciation to our staff. So we can delay it until the time's up. Just by my, my, I'm like, it's way to increase, I mean, so I'm doing it, do I do Christmas tomorrow?
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to move that we delay and also as farewell, I think, because it'll be the end of this county council. As in, I can set the date, after our last county council meeting, maybe July, or we do a view of July. It will conclude in August or September is when we check out. So I'm happy to move that we delay and look at having an end of term event with our staff in the future of July or early August before we are to, who are the seven members?
Member McKibben?
Look, I, I support that, but I would also say that the seventh meeting, we put a motion forward to, in fact, to start, for their events, truly, current calendar, calendar of the year. And the council, we appreciate the effort, so I, I.
No, we're excited to have you to have that little add-on. Okay, thank you. Um, there's no other, um, consensus, only the three, yeah. Um, councillors, um, I think it's been self-explanatory to what we're going to do moving forward. We don't need us to go through those, through once again, um, all four against, sorry, yes?
I'm good to go through it, sorry. Point A will be as, as written here.
Yes. But we're going to have a workshop with that, um, as I, I just asked, the reason I brought last, General Manager, bring that up because we'll have a report next meeting just felt comfortable to bring that issue here.
No, there's, I, sorry, yeah, go back to point A, I, I think we just need to, to drop the issue and someone, not have a workshop, if someone wants to raise it because of later on, wouldn't there's the motion and they're raising it, I think we've done it to death.
Well, you've got your point there, but, um, um, on the top of.
Okay, I read it.
Yeah, so the workshop is to do with, um, the, um, session we had the other day, if you go through that, that, I just brought that in when we talked about the governance. Um, so it wasn't a workshop as such on the governance, so I, I've got that long.
Um, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the, the workshop, just want to, we're talking about the same thing. So in item six, there's a meeting schedule, but there is at the moment a workshop, not until June, that can be adjusted by the council. And I take it that whatever that workshop is not yet decided would be when, um, member Reynolds is proposing that we discuss, explore the opportunities on governance gathering up, so you, so this.
Well, if I get an opportunity later on to vote against discussing governance at a, at a workshop, I'll do so.
Yes, okay, yes, yeah. So, so Mr. Chairman, for clarity, I don't think that the three items you're really now actually say that there will be a workshop that will discuss, and I thought we're going to discuss that in the next item.
And if I'm confused too, what it was, we say next meeting, we're going to discuss what happened at the, the staff, um.
That's correct, yes.
That's the day as such, if I put it, that's what's going to come up at next meeting. Are we comfortable, members? Okay, all four against Carrie, thank you. It's point five, statutory annual report for year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, no, a recommendation to move the second up. Councillor, I mean, with Kim, on the Friday, are you happy you said it? Any discussions, then just, then Reynolds.
Um, Mr. Chair, one point that I think should be an annual report, but I'm passing it out without a worry, uh, but the future annual reports is attendance. I think there's actually no record of attendance of, uh, members, and that should be, and there will be ten at sixty eight or, I don't need to be.
Mr. Chairman, I think I did last year, but I, somehow it slipped out, I can, I can adjust this and put that in.
Well, why don't we pass it with amendment to attendance record and be attached to it?
I agree with that. Move and second, are you happy with that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that as such, um, any other commentary, so, move around, is that, is that, yeah. Okay, all four against Carrie, thank you. Point six, county council meeting scheduled for twenty twenty one, we have a recommendation there, try to move it to second up. Um, you've gave, um, uh, credits. Any, then Reynolds?
So, Mr. Chair, I was looking at, rather than having a workshop in the middle of the year, as you're going to suggest, potentially April, we can have a workshop afterwards, um, with items, and then the, the, you can cancel, we might have a workshop in October, like, worth having a workshop in the county council with the members to talk about their future thing, um, potentially October or the day of November.
Then is he comfortable about, so they put it into April for a workshop, we just will have that modified as far as, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, the only item I actually have on the list for that first one is, um, a formality of going back to our, um, our reschedule stuff, so we need to look at that once a year, so, oh, everyone, so that would be, yeah, I mean, I've got on there at the moment, but we'll review that as we go. Can I just say that at the moment, that issue, remember Reynolds though, of looking at the governance thing isn't in here. It can be put in later, but it's not.
Mr. Chair, more opportunities rather than governments, as well as, I think, what, what could be taken against our governments and, and the Leslie is concerned about governments, I, I'm actually looking at trying to develop the organisation and, and opportunities, it may be worth that workshop, inviting LLS to see whether we, we can, you know, develop some opportunities with them, uh, particularly on the central table, and except for at least discuss, so the chairman or the general manager to come along and, and have a discussion about opportunities. So that, that, rather than governments, I, I see it more as opportunities to expand and develop civil conversation.
The development of the core data, so.
Yeah, that's more online, right, um, the commercial development, this is one, that's saying how we could, yeah, I, I've got no problem with.
I'd like, I support that side of it, yeah, I think that's what, yeah, but Leslie.
Mr. Leslie, please, you.
Yep.
So I'll interject a bit into that, with the other one. Okay, for April.
And if, if, sorry, if we have LLS, which was one of the suggestions there, maybe a third item, the quality of this is there, was to try and work through, but it may be different persons, LLS, this concept of a more holistic approach to get rid of the ways, salt test, spray, could be discussed with LLS, and we work out a strategy, which they are the experts in that side of it, so we leave that to them, and how we can actually refer landhogs or how we tell LLS that these people have done the aerial spraying, we should approach them or do something like that, how we work in tandem, I think is the way.
So this would be something very new, very unique to how things have been done in the past.
Yeah.
So it could be potential chasing as far as support from, over staying.
So, you know, it also assists us in that we're seeing it's not only the, um, the policemen on the block for weeds, but we're actually, just proactively is actually fixing up the environment as well. Is, is, I think, you know, we've got to look at the whole thing, to get better pastures for, for stock and, um, and better environmental consequences as well.
I'll tell you all the members.
Which is why most landhogs, most good landhogs, we all wanted it.
Yes. Okay, members, now the commentary, okay, there's a recommendation there, all four against with those assessments, thank you. Item seven, weed biosecurity operations update, can I imagine? Uh, there's, I've got, I've moved a second, sorry. Then the Reynolds, then the Kim.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I just want to highlight, um, actually, no, not the wrong report, sorry, it's the next one, I want to highlight something. Uh, no, I think, I think most of this report is self-explanatory, really, and if there's any questions, um, we were still down a little bit because of the aerial program, which we did successfully deliver, um, and obviously we're talking about the steps we can take to rectify that as the year goes on, but, um, otherwise, things are ticking along.
Then the Reynolds.
Just a question for Tru, he's the chair's general manager, um, with regard to biosecurity penalty notices or penalty notices, uh, I noticed, well, potentially, we haven't issued many, if any, in the last few months, um, is there a reason that was, um, the spring of this spraying program or, and potentially could we be that to issue a last round of all?
Mr. Chairman, I shouldn't use this expression, probably, but, uh, penalty season is early in the new year, um, and that's really when the cycle happens to come back, people who had directions have been given the spring and early summer to get their weeds under control, and so in the next few months, so basically from January onwards, that's when you'd expect to see either a step up in penalties or a lot of directions to help with. So it, it has the cycle we're in at the moment.
Um, I think you're forty six landhogs into the aerial program, is that right?
Forty, forty one, I think.
Forty one, okay, sorry. Um, so I don't know, we're all happy, pretty, um, I mean, it was great being able to do it, quite a bit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I say chief, well, excuse me, I've said a bit of a comment here.
Uh, yeah, so we've got a, a new response without issue, um, obviously conditions don't quite, five of them initially, um, so we've run both, uh, grain news and liquid, um, in this program, um, landhogs that we're doing, same people are happy with the, with the prices that we're delivering.
Have we had any, I mean, I'm signing people, changing things to make, but, um, some, some landhogs, I haven't seen the past, Cranny, so I'm working effectively, there's a liquid special drying, it's a lot of, anyway, we give landhogs a choice, so that's the, the decision. But have we noticed anything? We have made more stations, what we're doing?
Uh, we're not, sorry, um, not so much that one works better than the other, um, they work slightly before, the active ingredient is the same as we have, um, the delivery is what's, is what changes, um, we notice sometimes that one will react faster than the other, the moisture conditions and environmental conditions, um, in terms of one necessarily worked better than the other, we haven't noticed a big trend on that at this stage. Um, we have noticed a trend in terms of the effect that the process could have on those grasses and that, um, so there's a bit of strength there at this stage, but also to, this is only the second time we've run with members in our program, um, we've been looking back at when we've been done by, by the one past, but, yeah, in terms of what we've actually done ourselves, this is only the second program we've run, and Reynolds can do it, a direct comparison. Could, could we, could I ask we monitor it? Because I, I've heard, I mean, I've heard some people have not been able to grant the ground application or area, so, um, that's, I just made that comment, because I think we should monitor it, yeah, especially when there's dry conditions, I've heard in some parts, that's what I've been told, I have not had experience, so, so. Um, okay. Well, I, and I noticed that there are a number of landhogs on the, the register I can mention this, um, that are looking at an aerial program, I'm assuming that's, is either this aerial program or a future one, we currently have notices against them of some description or another. So is that the future one? Because I noticed that some of them would be tussing, so that would be spring next year, do we have to wait that long?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in that table, the ones that are mentioned with aerial against are act- actually were in this program the other day.
Oh, okay.
Everyone, everyone.
Every one of them, okay, that's fine, thank you, because I noticed they had directions.
Good looking.
Mr. General, would you talk about, um, how they've still had a current management reports? Is that fair to?
Is there one, two?
Yes. That's the, the foreground, I can tell.
Yeah. What the place that you.
Someone had a very much a management report.
Yep.
Talking about the, uh, East Fife Forestry Corporation, Bathurst Management Area, this is a good initiative, but I'm just wondering whether that covers the forest area at the northern end of the Blaney Shire, next to the Cady Road.
Mr. Chairman, I, without looking at a map, um, my understanding is that the Bathurst Forest Region actually goes out, so we've got the majority of it in our county area, but it does extend out into Cabon and Orange and a, and a little bit that way. So, yeah, I think, and that was the issue that they were raising with me in discussions was Upper Macquarie occupied, or they occupy, something like seventy, eighty, ninety percents of their area is actually in our area, but they've got these extra bits in Cabon and Orange and the likes, can't they just have one local control authority to liaise with? So, um, the short answer is yes, they're in the Bathurst area.
Well, councillor Reynolds and I have been saying for quite some time, mind you, on zoom, so no one here expected us to, we personally, that the area in the Blaney Shire at the northern end, where a joint Cabon, is riddled with blackberries inside the road. It's one of the few instances of the Blaney Shire where there's blackberries running wild a bit inside the road. And, uh, of course, they come in from forestry, so it's our problem, it's because of forestry problem. And so if there was going to be, uh, this, uh, program, which is spoken off here, by trial, um, from roadside edge, uh, to the forestry edge, Forestry Corporation's cost, and we've initially set three programs there, even the Blaney Shire, it'd be very advantageous if they took on the responsibility of the area of the north, on the north of, of the Cady Road, Bruce, wouldn't it, have the tree there?
Through the chair, we would build a road, it's the majority of the blackberries which are in Cabon, and that's the issue, but I have flagged it earlier on, that there is a major landholder who wants to try and work to work with forestry and ourselves and potentially Cabon to get a similar outcome to what we're doing elsewhere, so hopefully we can bring all parties together, with this chair to, um, have, get a positive outcome in this area, which is affecting Blaney Shire, so Upper Macquarie County Council area, but it's not getting the county council area where the blackberries are.
Yep, so I'm, I'm confused, sorry, member Kim says it is, but then county council area, is it or is it not?
Definitely it's, what I'm thinking, first hand, if I'm one step too mu- too far, what I'm saying is northern end of the Blaney Shire, Cady Road, blackberries coming from the forestry area on the road, and because of seasons like this, it's really exploding, and my understanding, what I've actually thought, was that area is sprayed, my understanding was a force, it's one area of the Shire that really needs attention, but this program, I'm enthusiastic about this program, Forestry Corporation's costs, and I think they should be alerted to that issue, the area on the northern end of the Blaney Shire, Cady Road.
Then the King, uh, King and Lady, Chief Biosecurity Officer's got, uh, this is a bit of a tax or whatever, they, and she's rather just, and we're just, okay, so, then with Kim.
Um, the Brownway Cardo program, um, I read it, I'm just confused, what we're doing, so they've done a whole, is the, is the area, one of the areas that I always see, I didn't like everyone else, is, uh, when I go over the overhead bridge, coming out of Blaney on the New Bridge Road, New Best Road, as we've done up, there are a lot of blackberries down the main rail line there, off to the right, I'm assuming they go all the way through. When, I know this is the, this is the planned program, but we've got any plans for when that's to be done?
Chief Biosecurity, so, coming from, out of the New Bridge Road, so you go past Blair Pathall, the big house.
Yeah.
And you go over, over the railway bridge, before you go under the next one, as you go over, you look off to the right, you've got Cady as a processing plant on the left, but they have, off to the right, there's a whole lot of blackberries down the line there.
Mr. Chair, they're, they're far pretty well from our boundary in Orange, so particularly in Milford itself is a disgrace, I think, and that, that's embarrassing because we've got landhogs who are cleaning up their fence and blackberries just bringing, carrying over, but even off the landhogs, um, which are mainly urban landhogs, if we could get something in that village along the road, I'd kind of be appreciated, but it's all the road, I like right along to Blaney, so from Milford through to Blaney, then on through down to New Bridge, uh, there are issues.
So what, I, I think what we discussed before is to have a map to say, right, this is what, and I know we're having problems in speaking, so it's moving there, but we're going to have a map to say, right, this is for forestry and for, and for, um, uh, railways to say, right, this is the rail lines within county council area, this is what was done in nineteen twenty, this is what's to be done in twenty twenty one, different colors, I think we talked about, you know, blah, blah. So when I come up with a question like this, or, remember Reynolds raised, what's happening at Dunforth Station, or, um, member Kim says, what's happening up, you know, towards Lindhurst, et cetera, um, we can say, right, well, this is basically what we've agreed with John Vaughan, uh, this is what was done in nineteen twenty, yes, we still have a respect with them, we're having a difference, difficulties with code, et cetera, this is what they're planning for twenty twenty one, so we can just, you know, just know where we're going because, um, like us all, you know, landhogs, so what are rail, what, people in Milford, uh, because, uh, remember, um, Reynolds is saying is, when are they going to get to those flipping blackberries all over Milford, which I agree, so we can say, right, well, they've done this bit, this area, you know, we can do, plenty to do that, it's a bit, and I, and I think we should be sort of trying to do something, saying with forestry now we've got this, right, they've agreed to do these three roads, um. Um, if member King has got an issue of the, of the Blaney, towards Cady, or have a look at that city council area, we say, right, well, we're going to talk to them about, do we have a next program? Just so we, we, we know and we can convince our constituents, because we're not, we're not, you know, we're not just saying that it, it's not sort of the privacy issue that is with the private landhulls, we're able to say there's a plan for it. Um, so I think that's the next step, or I know we've got the mapping for the landhulls, which is fantastic. But I think the next step is to say, like, rail corridors, um, forestry, and the forestry might, again, it might target two areas, it'll target roads and, and what we're doing. But it'll also target those landhulls that are fronting forestry, having problems with weeds. Um, you know, we, 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 we'll, we might be putting notices on that. We, we will be putting notice on forestry where those landhulls indicated as a biosecurity problem or that we located from our perspective. So I just wonder if that's the suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, so firstly, I agree, we think to have a, a problem we have with the system at the moment, and it'll take a while to resolve, is it doesn't have the capability to identify roads easily. That is to, to, unlike the maps we do for the private property or, or the normal land, you can easily go pick out whatever we tell it to, and there's your map. You still can't do it the same for road partly, and that's why you've got a hand-colored one once before, which is helpful. Um, you could easily do a hand-colored one for the railway line, and it wouldn't, it's not like it'll change every five minutes. Um, but the roads, every council does their roads differently, so Bathurst, I think, is it every half kilometer or hundred yards or?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I think, um, Bathurst changes a little bit in that some sections might be same case during the road, other sections not.
But I'm, I'm more talking here that, that, that areas of roads in front of forests, I think, wouldn't be bothering.
But, Mr. Chairman, what I'm saying is, the extent to which we do it would have to be literally by hand at the moment, as in on a map, because there is no capability to distinguish the components of roads. You could do it by default, we can easily identify the, the public land, for example, or crown lands, forests. That's not too hard to do, um, meaning it could be just one way or another. Um, but the chief biosecurity office could identify those properties and highlight them on the more.
Well, could we start with the railway?
We'll have to a hand do it.
Okay, um, that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be too hard, as we're not talking about. Um, or can't we get something from simple mapping for you?
Is there any, is there any material to listen to?
Mr. Chairman, it's actually the, it's, it's, it's the underlying, it's the underlying layout of, of property boundaries that's the difficulty. So, for example, in some block of council areas, one road, which could be fifty kilometers long, is one dock. As far as the system is concerned, so to identify which bit of the road was or wasn't, or should or should, it's just, you just can't do it. But there, there aren't very many railway lines.
No, that's.
Basically, you've got the muggy, muggy, you have to go, or.
That's why, that's why I did the case, maybe, I understand the issue, let's go by, but yeah, railway lines, I think we could do it. Um, because I, like everyone else, would like to know when they're doing the road, the railway course, we're just going to lie here of what's done, what's, what's planned. We've got, we've got them, the next year's program for the railway. So have we got John Holland's program for what we're going to treat twenty twenty-one now?
Mr. Chairman, that's what, so it might, might be cryptic, that's what's in the report, saying that the drum, drum on the line, for example, is on their program, and they're actually just working out how and when they're going to do it at the moment. We also know what they did last year. Um, but what we haven't been able to verify that it was actually all done, all, all done well. Uh, and then we've got the next section, which is sort of like from Bathurst out on the live line, which we're trying to shed. So in simple terms, we can easily cover in railway line and say, that's been done but not checked. That area is, has been inspected and they're putting their plan detail together. This section up here is yet to be inspected, and, and that's the bit we're arguing about.
So, well, if you're all happy, I just mentioned, do you have, uh, next meeting, um, we'll have those hand drawings and we have a round of discussions, give an idea.
Well, that's one, right, well.
Yeah, right. Yep, so if anyone's happy, we'll move that to next meeting and, and further discussions for that, that's okay?
Number five, um, could, it's two, it's always funny, it's a term in hindsight, Richard, if I'm there, and the lights are, it's funny, man.
They, they have seen them, um.
Uh, well, we, or, okay, there, there, there's a strip of grass, but it's white on the edge of the bush.
Ah.
That's, that's not.
So, Mr. Chairman, most, probably all, most local councils have their own, um, probably around that. Um, roadside weed spraying program, which is basically from the edge to the asphalt, some lunch at a bottom of the table, ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's nothing to do with us whatsoever.
So it's not our contract, is it?
No.
Because I was, I think they're creating, well, that's, you know, the point, I'll take it up with the council.
Right, a couple of questions, um, firstly, with regard to areas for answers, coming back to that one. Um, with regard to blackberries, are we looking at our autumn campaign for doing the blackberry campaign?
Yes.
Um, and are we aiming February or is there a, a, this time we haven't, but we've been, but officially, I guess, that we're aiming March. Just in case it comes dry, as I can say, later on, so that autumn can tend to dry. Um, but anyway, that's, I think, as long, as long as it is, because blackberries are going crazy, it's the same as grasses and that. Secondly, second question is with regards to the lane to drum on the line, um, through our, um, quarry area. Uh, I know here that some of the country is leased, so potentially could, would we have to start action? In those sections that are leased, uh, with the individual leasing, which could attract it another twelve months or so, while we go through the process of, of directions, et cetera, if they're not compliant.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we, we have contemplated that situation, and that's why we've issued the notice to transport the new south Wales. Because they are the ultimate landholder regardless, have the ultimate responsibility. Our understanding, and we don't get into details, is that there's lots of little bits of leasehold, you know, just abutting individual properties. And we've basically put it back on them and said, they're your leases, you deal with them, you tell them what they have to do or not do. And I'm presuming most leases typically, that responsibility would go to the leasing. So hopefully we've avoided that situation deliberately.
Just two questions, just, it was a difference. Um, thank you, Chair, I've got a question. Uh, we, oh, the road weed spraying program, that hadn't started by the time we wrote the report, when did it start?
So at the moment, I think we're, we're gearing up for it, now the area is done, I think it won't, when I'm starting, uh, uh, in any great force until a little bit of December. But our staff have been doing a few odd bits already, just cranking up where they've got, you know, things that are just coming into flower or isolated little patches.
Is there, is there John's Ward coming into flower or?
Yeah. So early December, so early December.
And that's with an increased budget that we agreed, or did we agree at the workshop, or did we agree with them?
I think you agreed to it at the beginning to go, yes.
That's right, I do think.
Yep, question please. Okay, what was recommendation there, all four against Carrie, thank you. Councillors, we go with the confidential agenda, a motion to get, move, the, the, the members, the members, the Reynolds. Um, as there's no movements of the public, all four against Carrie, can I? Uh, could I, the general manager, read out the, um, results of the confidential report, please?
Uh, the, the recommendation was that the weed by security risk register report is September thirtieth, twenty twenty is noted.
Governor, I have a nervous, uh, seconded to accept that, uh, councillor, member McKibben, then Reynolds, all four against. Um, I declare the meeting closed at, um, two minutes before, thank you very much. Members, thank you for your support, and, uh, we'll be back in a moment. Yes, first on those, twenty-six, yeah.